Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting the order of the Lathar Village Planning Commission for Tuesday, June 20, 2023. Let's all stand and make a pledge of allegiance, please.
Do it.
Recite it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam Clerk, if we can have the roll call, please.
Chairman Hammond.
Present.
Vice Chair Stansberry.
Present.
Secretary Fobbs.
Here.
Commissioner Disick. Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamorelli.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Disick.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Disick?
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll now entertain a motion to approve or amend the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay. We'll now entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of May 16, 2023.
Were there meeting minutes in the packet?
No.
They were not in the packet, but they are on the website.
They will email to you on Friday night.
What was that?
They will email to you on Friday night.
Oh, I don't think I got it. Okay.
Did anybody else, did they?
They're pretty brief.
Yeah, I didn't.
Does anybody have any changes to the minutes? Or like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written.
You have a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting minutes from the May 16, 2023 meeting are approved. We'll now move on to public comment. There's nobody here. I don't think we're doing Zoom. So we'll close the public comment. Next item is old business and tabled items, of which we have none. So we'll move on to new business. So the first item of new business is item A, zoning determination for 27300 Southfield Road.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Eric Peach with Giffords Webster. It's good to be with you this evening. If you had a chance to look through your memo, you'll see that the city had some interest in tenant space just south of here at 27300 Southfield Road for a laundromat. And so I was working with Susie, working through the ordinance to try and determine what the ordinance says about the district of which it's zoned. And that is the mixed use. And so there's no specific determination for a permitted use of laundromat within the district. The closest that we came up with was the personal services use, which is a business that performs personal services on the premises of including, but not limited to barber shops, beauty shops, day spas, tailor shops, and photographic studios. And so this particular use is also included in the CV Commercial Vehicle District, the O1 Office District, and the VC Village Center District. But again, it's not a permitted by right use within the MX District of where their interest is. So we explained that to the applicant and expressed that we would like to hear from the Planning Commission and what your determination is because within that section of the ordinance, it does say that use is similar to any principal permitted use is appropriate as determined by the Planning Commission. So that's what gives you the purview to make a recommendation on that, whether or not laundromat is an appropriate use. So we did explain that to the applicant again. They do have plans for exterior renovations as well as the change of use for the interior, which as I understand it was a retail use. So if they were to proceed and move forward, it would be an application for change of use. And this would require a site plan review and approval. So if you think back to the event house application that we did, it was an existing building, change of use, we would be looking at specific things such as parking, landscaping. I don't anticipate that that would be an issue, but we would need to take a close look at parking and just the overall site as it relates to the existing conditions and what would be proposed there, the laundromat, as an impact to the site. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, you can deliberate on the proposal.
Hi, good evening. Jill Payne with Giffords Webster. Just as a follow-up to Eric's introduction of this topic, I think that there's really two approaches that you could take. One would be a consideration of whether this is similar to one of your listed uses, as Eric indicated, the personal services category, or whether you feel it's more appropriate to create a text amendment and add this list, or add this to the list of uses specifically, and also come up with some standards that might be associated with it, one of which may include parking. So there's two kinds of approaches that you can take. One is a little bit more straightforward and maybe quicker. The other one, we might want to consider with a little bit of deliberation. So just throwing that out there. Did you want to?
The only thing I was going to add to that is that this is not a unique process. A long, long, long time ago, this body created this use matrix that's in the current zoning ordinance. So these discussions were Mark Highland and...
It's been a while.
I can't remember who else was in the [inaudible].
Well, clearly photographic studios would be something that we don't even necessarily have.
There really isn't a guiding source that we can look to to say, all right, where do they fit? It's really going to be unique to the community, unique to the needs of the use. And like Eric and Jill said, you can try to find it somewhere. But I would think something like this might be worth calling out and putting some standards and picking a district where it is appropriate. Because it is a little more unique than, at least in my opinion, a little more unique than the personal services.
Yeah, so we could think about it in a couple of different ways. You might start by talking about what the benefits could be of having this use in the city. So could it be that it's bringing people to the city or serving residents of the city, putting them in place where they may linger for a little bit? And could that potentially spill over into some other patronage of other businesses that could be nearby? So that might be something to consider for it. And then other things that we might want to think about would be some of the impacts of it. Is there going to be cars, are there going to be cars coming and going? Is there a drop-off service where people are dropping things off and then picking them up later? Is that a separate thing? Is it mostly going to be for people coming in? And so because we don't have an actual application, you can sort of decide what you think is appropriate. And then whether this business can meet those standards will remain to be seen. And unfortunately, they're not here to talk a little bit more about what they have in mind. But I think those are some of the things that you might use to sort of frame your conversation to get things started.
Jason, maybe we start with the two-part approach that Jill mentioned, that probably changes the conversation. Like, I'm a big fan of zoning, even though it's more complex and it's more discussion. You know, is it 24/7 laundromat? You know, or do we? And I'm just making that up as a use case. It's like, there may be some things that generically, not talking about this client, that we want to actually consider when we're looking at. Because there are some things with laundromats in terms of water usage, in terms of patron usage, they're a little different, or could be different. And so maybe we actually decide which way we're going. And then we would actually probably be able to deeper dive.
And I would suggest thinking of it not from the standpoint of this specific applicant, which is beneficial because we know nothing about this specific applicant. But for the future, you know, if there's one, there might be another that may have a different business model. So kind of try to explore.
That's what I was kind of saying, like parameters, if there's, that leads one direction. But if it's more generic and it's just kind of finding a use that makes sense that we currently exist, and that's a whole different conversation.
I figure a text amendment seems to make more sense because it doesn't really seem to be similar to personal services, you know? I mean, especially with respect to parking. And like you said, water usage was another thing. Is the infrastructure going to support it?
Or the number, the amount of them that we would have in the city?
I agree. Personal services is too generic for something like this that has the potential of many environmental impacts, but also could have many significant benefits to the community. What do you guys think?
I like the simple approach. I mean, I think it's a simple business. It's like a dry cleaners, except it has a little different model to it. But it's, dry cleaners clean stuff, laundromats clean stuff. People drop stuff off, maybe they wait, maybe they go across to Panera. I don't know, maybe the text amendment is a simple alternative. I see it as a personal service based on what it says. Limited to barber shops, beauty shops, day spas, tailor shops. You know, tailor shops work on clothes. This is washing clothes. I don't know how, you could categorize it as anything but personal service. But I'm the new guy here, so I don't know.
The only thing that concerns me with that, I mean, the biggest issue personally I would have with that is the parking, right? Because the parking is going to be, is going to be very different. Because in a laundromat, people park and they stay and they, they're usually there for a couple hours because that's how long it takes to do a load or do a laundry. So you get a lot of people doing that. That's a little bit different than, you know, one or two people dropping off. They're cleaning and, you know, coming and going. So that would be my only concern with that.
And if we had, if we had a dry cleaner in the city already that we could like reference in terms of how they're utilizing?
Just south of 11 Mile? There's a dry cleaner?
I thought that one was in Southfield, but you're right, it's north of Lincoln in it.
Did I, am I making things up? Was the building sold or just the unit that the dry cleaning's going in? Did I see that in Susie's note?
Yeah, that was in the memo. I don't have the specifics of that, but that's.
I, like I say, I lean towards the simple, but I'm open to, you know, talking a little bit about putting a little, you know, building something around it a little bit, too.
I was thinking about this laundromat, or sorry, the dry cleaner that already exists. I don't know if anybody has any history on their site plan review, whenever that was.
It's been there like 50 years.
It's a long time ago, I know. So probably there isn't any.
Nothing, I have nothing on that.
Figured I'd ask. Okay. I don't know, I guess it seems like the consensus is to at least discuss an amendment to the zoning ordinance. So let's go down that path. So I don't know what, I think all the points that have been brought up so far, at least as like an initial effort, things like parking, things like water usage and sewage water, things like, I feel like hours of operation is already in the ordinance and we wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't deviate from that. Anything else that they, I mean, we would just have to figure out what other communities that have laundromats, what kind of language do they have that we can pick from, steal from?
I know there was one in Berkeley. I don't know if it's still there.
They're proposing one in Berkeley, too, the same franchise. I don't know if it's a franchise, but the Skyler laundromat.
No, they're family-owned.
Family, okay, well, they're opening, one is coming soon in Berkeley.
The one on Coolidge?
Yeah.
It's, I think it's already open.
Oh, it is? Okay.
It's open already. No, it's already built out, that's what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, they have a lot of them in the Metro Detroit area.
So maybe a question as a follow-up, Jason, is is this a special category that we're calling out for laundromats? Or is there a category that we're lumping these together? Because do we want to have a special call-out for this type of service for whatever reason? Or is there a category that we're lumping this in? I don't know the precedent in other cities, but either it's, I'm assuming we're changing the language on personal services and making a special call-out and not actually saying, well, there's this one type of business that we've got to actually put extra parameters on. Are we assuming when we say text change that we're actually looking at a call-out?
I think it's a call-out because, you know, if you look at the list of principal permitted uses specifically in the mixed-use district, it calls out things like health and fitness facilities, which would be similar concerns around parking and hours of operation and water usage and sewage, banks, outdoor cafes, retail commercial uses. So to me, like, this is kind of.
There's precedent for it.
I think so. In my opinion.
We're car washes.
Okay. But those are.
I know, it's a little.
It's a stretch, isn't it? That's, if you want to talk about it, I agree with Bo. I don't think this is much different than a cleaners. I mean, if you go to the one that's right up on, there's one in Southfield on Greenfield at 696. No, there aren't people lingering. It's just they pull up, they drop their stuff off and leave and come back and pick it up. Not a lot, they don't have any more parking over there than we have because of that little strip right off 696. So the parking is kind of limited over there as well, but.
I think that's what makes a difference, though. Like, I agree with them regarding like a personal use.
Yeah.
But I think that's what differentiates the two, is the need of parking.
But I don't think the need of parking is any different than if you go up there. They don't have them anymore. You're using, you're still dropping off, it's still a service. And there's other businesses up, well, there's not really any other businesses over there, over there.
But there could be.
Well, but you don't know what the overall development is going to be. You don't know how much space this is going to take up. And I don't think lumping it into something like a fitness center is different. I mean, if you're going to put a Planet Fitness over there, that's a big difference.
Right.
If you're going to put a Jack's Car Wash down there, that's a big difference. But this is not that. If you were going to put a Aqua Tots over there, we wouldn't be having this kind of conversation. But it has the same use, water, sewage, all of it's the same. It's just.
Different scale.
Right, but I mean, maybe I'm confused, but I think the parking is very different.
Yes, the parking is very different from the dry cleaner.
But you're basing it on what your perceived volume of the people are going to be using.
Well, and the business type, though, you don't stay and wait for them to do your dry cleaning.
But what I'm saying is, if you look at their business model and you look at their other locations, their parking is just as much as that over there. And they're not, the people aren't there.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you meant comparing it to the dry cleaner on Southfield. I didn't know you meant comparing it to other locations that they have.
I'm using their location. I'm just looking at their locations, the ones that I've driven by. The one on Berkeley doesn't have any more parking than this one, or space over here. The one on Greenfield doesn't have any more space than this one over here. So obviously, their business model is not designed for people to be there two hours when a machine only takes 20 minutes to get your stuff done.
Well, I would just say be prepared. I don't know if the request will come to us or who else with the city. Be prepared for owners, prospective owners and current owners to want labeled parking signs for their guests, for their customers. I think that will come down the line if we do, say we do approve this with limited parking. Because if they, from what they're envisioning, if they do want to redevelop it and add future businesses and we do have limited parking, we're going to have to assign, okay, these five spaces are laundry customers. These next three are whatever, burger, not burger, but you know, another business.
But the ordinance calls out parking space requirements based on things like square footage, right?
Right, in this case, you might base it on the number of washing machines. If you said, and this just based on my personal experience of having my washing machine not working and having to go to laundromat, you know, maybe it's one for three washing machines. Or maybe it's more than that. But I do think, too, and I think that you're starting to get to this, that we have to keep in mind that it might not be this particular business model. It could be anybody opening a laundromat. And so we need to think about the different types of situations. And if it is this one and they use less parking, that's awesome. But we should be anticipating just the standard, or maybe even understanding like newer ones coming in. But still, there's a lot of older ones that do, you come in, you sit and you wait. Sometimes people come and go and they take that risk of leaving their things in the washing machine. But generally speaking, people are going to hang around and wait for it to be done. So I think thinking about those things is helpful.
And I've seen like the kind of quote-unquote hipster laundromats coming to the Metro Detroit area where there's like a bar and people hang out and there's TVs and people want to, so people do want to stay around and have their laundry.
People might decide, even if their machines are working at home, they might want to come down and have a drink. I think, thinking about that, what some of the other ancillary uses might be. So if you had a laundromat, what you might consider to be an accessory that they would be able to do? Maybe they can sell food and beverages, you know? Certainly, if they have a liquor license, that's going to be a separate thing anyway, as a special land use. But those might be some of the things. It sounds like, you know, generally, you would be supportive of them being in the same district where personal services are, but there just might be some additional standards that you would want to see with them, and parking being one of them. We heard water usage disposal. I wonder about hazardous material storage, if there's a dry cleaning component to it, just the storage of that, just to acknowledge it in the ordinance and refer them to another section. Is there anything else?
Odor. Odor was something we talked about with marijuana dispensaries when we came up with the language for that.
Right.
So I think generally, laundromats are going to have a pretty pleasant smell. But, you know.
But if you're living behind it, I don't know that you're going to want to smell your floral scent all day long.
So we might want to have language that mitigates that.
And that's similar to in 2015 when the city did a tech, this body, and then the council ultimately adopted a zoning or text amendment with reference to the mini-storage facilities that we allowed for them as a special land use within MX District?
I think.
Was it mixed use?
It might have been, yeah. But then we carved out specific standards for that. So, you know, composition of the building, like you referenced odor capture, you know, things that normally you wouldn't have that opportunity if they're just treated as, you know, traditional. So you could, that's why I think my perspective on it would be, you got an opportunity to kind of tighten down and control the business model, regardless of whether it's this one or somebody else. That way, you've got, you can get what you're hoping to get, not what you're afraid to get.
Right, right. And just some background, too. When we did the clear zoning transformation of the ordinance, the personal service category was one that was created to simplify. So instead of having, you know, 50 listed uses, we have combined some of them into a category and we look at that definition. And if it seems like it fits, then that's what it is. And if it seems like it's maybe not quite it, then we can look at expanding our list of uses.
Yeah, and I feel like if we put together specific language on a couple of categories that are kind of additional requirements of laundromats, that can also be, and we can also have an opportunity to decide which districts something like that would be authorized in. Right, personal services is kind of, it's in a lot of different districts.
Pretty much everywhere. Okay.
My feeling is that it makes sense to try and put some controls around these, the issues that we brought up around things like parking, sewage and water usage, odor. And hazardous storage. So it doesn't have to be super extensive. We do have to obviously go through the standard process. There'll have to be a public hearing and all that kind of stuff. It'll take a little bit of time, but I don't think it'll take us too much time to hash out these couple of additional bullets that would be appropriate for how a laundromat would be executed inside of the city. That's my feeling.
I completely disagree with him. I think it's just way overreaching at this point in time. It fits an existing category, but I'm just one person.
You have support.
I feel better now.
Even if we do, so we come back next month and we bring you some language, if you look at it and then at the end of that discussion, you're like, yeah, you know what? Really, it should be just be this and we'll, then it's done. But at least you've gone through the exercise of having looked at some of the other standards that you might create and giving it a little bit more thought.
No problem with that.
So let's talk in hypotheticals. So we don't do anything and parking becomes an issue. I mean, do we run into that in other situations with other businesses unanticipated? And how is it handled?
Good question. I'm not aware.
Jagged fork, you know, lots of parking. It's a restaurant, we knew there'd be lots of parking needs. There's lots of parking needs. I don't know that anyone's over the top happy with it, but, you know, somehow it seems to work, I guess. I don't know.
They've had to make some.
Have you had complaints, Bruce, at the council level?
I don't remember. Didn't they have like a shared agreement with the parking lot and store?
Well, there's been some issues.
And then they opened the lot up a little bit more, too?
Yeah, they've, there's been some issues, though. The one property owner immediately to the south doesn't want to enter into any sort of a shared parking agreement. So, yeah, they're using, they're using what they can. We have had issues, the right-of-way parking lot. But we have had issues with spillover parking at some of the, actually directly across the street, at that commercial property that has gone on to the residential streets. And council actually directed the police chief to issue a traffic control ordinance to address that problem. I don't know where they're parking now, but they're not parking on the streets anymore. So it does happen occasionally, but I'd say typically, we're pretty, you guys are pretty good about having those standards that are adequate for the intended uses. Just looking, I looked at Noah's, they are one parking space for each two machines, both washers and dryers. So that's potentially a lot of parking.
Yeah, we may not want to require that much because we may not have that much. We don't have that much.
They definitely don't have that much parking.
That's a lot of parking.
Yeah, that's a lot of parking.
What about the water and sewage? I mean, what would be the call-out on that? I'm sorry, I don't, can't anticipate what.
Just whether or not the system can handle the draw of water that they're going to be taking for the, you know, if they've got every machine going, what's that going to do to the neighbors and, you know?
Well, I think, I mean, I think I would be more concerned that the building itself be capable.
Of supplying enough water.
I'm thinking more of the electricity.
Electricity, too, right.
Some of these buildings, that one in particular.
What, they can't run extension cords like they do? It seems to work.
A lot of that, those, you know, those standards, I think, could be addressed, but those would, you'd be relying on your building official to make sure.
Doesn't say building codes.
Laundromats, I think they fit within a, like, just a business class. I don't know that there's a heightened standard for them under the building code, but I'm sure under the electrical code, it would have to be.
And that would end up having to be addressed in the renovation of the building anyway. You know they're going to park right there anyway. When they can't park in that building, they're going to take the lot right here. Park right next to it. Did Susie say if there was any timeframe that they intended to provide an update on what their building facade improvement plan was going to be? It doesn't quite say it, but it's pretty obvious when you drive over there, there's a plan. They say when they thought they would have something to present to that.
We instructed them to apply, particularly as it relates to the exterior renovation, because we needed to wait until we heard from the Planning Commission on an approach for the use. So we have not received an application for the exterior of the building for site plan review, which we had indicated to them that that would at least help us get the process started. So they wouldn't, it would minimize the wait time once a determination is made in regards to the laundromat. But as of right now, we don't have any official plans. They did apply for a building permit, is what I understand. But again, Susie indicated that that needs to be in the form of a site plan review application.
So maybe between now and when they do that, it'll be the same timeframe between now and when we get that back. To buy some time. To appease everyone.
At least go through the process, right? Make sure that we're not missing something that could be, have a heavy impact. And I feel like if we don't do that, then we're making an assumption that there's not going to be any impact. And I don't think that that's a reasonable assumption. It's possible that that could turn out that way, but what if it, what if it doesn't turn out that way and we haven't done our due diligence? That's what I'm concerned about.
How occupied is that building at the present? Is it, anybody know?
Is there like one business in there?
I mean, I know that can change in China, so we'll, just near term.
I think it's pretty vacant. There might be one or two businesses in there, maybe. But yeah, hopefully that does change, right?
Yeah.
So it's kind of like the idea. All right. Well, is everybody comfortable directing Giffords Webster to go and do some homework and bring back some ideas for potential language for text amendment? Is that cool? Like cool? Cool. That's what we would like you guys to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, super. So back to our agenda. The next item is planning and zoning refresher.
So your long awaited refresher for training. Now, when I asked Suzie what you all had in mind, she said just a general review of what the planning commission does. So I have that. Then I thought there may be some folks who've been on the planning commission long enough that they kind of know this already, but they might not have been on here long enough to have an appreciation of all the history of planning that's been done in the city for the last like 10, 12 years. So I thought that might be interesting. And I can't remember, Jason's seen it and Bruce has seen it, our Garden City discussion and some of that. Unless, I can't remember if you've seen it or not too. Okay, well, I have that also just in case we want to do it again. But also leaving it kind of open for you to ask questions and so we can just do that along the way if you'd like. So I can just go through and then just shout out the things that you have. So just a general roles and responsibilities of the planning commission, city council meetings, planning commission best practices. We will have time, I think, to continue that and look at a few types of reviews. So the statutory authority for the creation of a planning commission comes from two Michigan acts, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. These were consolidated in 2008 to 2006 respectively from what had been different enabling acts for cities, villages, townships. So it was nice when they brought that all together. Every now and then you'll see, you don't see amendments or changes to the zoning enabling act very often, but to the planning enabling act, sometimes we do see that where maybe we're being required to do things or we're being told we can't do things anymore. So keep an eye on that. Planning commission generally creates, maintains and updates the master plan. That is something that's required every five years to be reviewed. So we just had your comprehensive plan or master plan adopted in 2001. So we don't, we're not required to review it again. However, you can, there's no timeline on it. If you found something next year that you were like, you know what, we just never talked about that or we need to revisit this because this isn't right. So we can always do that. Planning commission reviews development review requests from applicants. So even things like tonight, determination, reviews rezoning requests and also can initiate zoning map and or text amendments, which is what you're doing with that last item. So you also do have staff and you have consultants. We and Suzie help you with, and Kelda and your whole team here, identifying any kind of local regulations for project applications, working with applications or applicants to make a project successful. So as Eric was talking about, having talked to the folks that were interested in this business, helping them identify the best path forward. Working with other departments and agencies, sometimes there may be, we don't really have a regional airboard, but if we did, we would work with them to incorporate comments and other technical recommendations that they may have. Ensure that procedures are being followed. So like looking at our ordinances, looking at our development review process and making sure that we're going, we're treating everybody the same way. So we have consistent process and hopefully we have consistent results. Preparing professional analysis and recommendation, monitoring project implementation. So when something's been approved, making sure that it's moving along. Often we'll hold consensus building meetings on controversial projects. We haven't had any of those in a while, which has been really nice. But when we do, that's one of the things that we are here for, to help, I don't know if they be a buffer for you, but just to help sort through some of the comments that we may hear. And then we may recommend zoning amendments as well. You also have a spectacular legal counsel who is here to answer your legal questions. He's not going to typically give policy direction, but may share his knowledge of an issue on other things that aren't maybe strictly legal. So we're partners in this. He will advise you on your relevant legal, relevant legal considerations, both in terms of process, like noticing requirements and then substance as well. So certain standards that he may feel are appropriate or that we may be overstepping. And then we have city council and they will balance the staff analysis, planning commission recommendations with the city goals. They're the legislative body and they have the final authority on other, most of the things that you do, except for site plans, which you do have authority over. I think that's just a really brief overview. I don't know if you've got any questions at all, but.
Kind of drives what we've already been doing, right? Since you guys joined, so.
Yeah. Open Meetings Act is always good to have a refresher on. It's a very important tool that we have the benefit of to promote government transparency. So it basically requires that a meeting of a public body must be made open to the public and that all of the decisions made by that public body must be made in a meeting open to the public and that that meeting has to be accessible to the general public with reasonable accommodations, ample notification and include a segment where public comments can be heard. All deliberations of a public body in a quorum shall take place at a public meeting with limited exceptions. So there are times when you can go into a closed session and your attorney can advise you on when that's appropriate. But for the most part, you're making decisions in a public setting. Public can make audio or video recordings of all meetings. And I don't know if you've had that happen lately, well, you have a council, but certainly someone taking out their phone and recording while you're speaking can be kind of, it can just make you feel kind of awkward at first, but they're allowed to do it and.
Happens at every council meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry for that. So as you have your planning commission meetings, again, they all have to be held in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. The planning commission should conduct business according to their adopted planning commission bylaws, and I'll touch on that in a minute. Beginning on time, following the written agenda. Again, that's all part of the Open Meetings Act. Comments should be directed through the chairperson. And sometimes that can be a challenge, especially when we're in an informal setting. That good practice would be to say through the chair, I'd like to ask applicant a question. Because when you do have those larger meetings, that will kind of put you in, you know, a good framework for kind of managing what might be a lot of comments. All deliberations should be open, made in the open. Don't hold private conferences during the meeting. Sometimes you might have a question and you might lean over to your neighbor and ask for some clarification. That may be completely permissible, but if someone's sitting in the room with you, they may not know what you're saying and they may be concerned by that. So it's best if you have a question, just through the chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I've got a question about this. But do express your opinions. That's why you are here. So you do have bylaws that were amended in March of 2019. They provide rules for your members, including the officers of chairperson, vice chairperson and secretary. Chairperson is pretty straightforward. Presiding at the meeting can request some staff or legal assistance, appoint committees. Reports of the planning commission matters that might not otherwise be heard by the planning commission. So if there was a committee meeting or some administrative action and you wanted to share that with the rest of the planning commission, that would be your, the chairperson's role for that. The vice chairperson or as I had a board member years ago used to say, the chair of vice will fill in and assist the chairperson as needed or when they're not here. Secretary is, according to your bylaws, the recording officer who maintains the records with assistance from staff, including the agenda minutes and rules of procedure. I don't know that we necessarily follow that to a T, but that is in your bylaws. Also in your bylaws, there are the rules for regular and special meetings, including the order of the agenda. I didn't realize you had this and not that it's come up recently, but that your meetings shall not exceed three hours without a vote of the planning commission. So once it's five to 10, it might be a good time to take a pause and say, are we going to continue this discussion?
I wonder who put that in there.
It's a, it's a good thing. There's provisions for absences and excused absences. There's an establishment of your quorum as the majority of the membership, which would be four members. Decisions require a majority of the members and tenants. So if you had four, if you have your four people, then you need to have three people that are going to approve that. Your master plan is the only thing that's different and that's part of the planning enabling act that requires two thirds of the membership to vote for that. And it also then corresponds to the Open Meetings Act and says that you have to do that as well. There are provisions in your bylaws and I believe you have an ordinance to this effect too on conflict of interest. The, if a commissioner thinks they may have a conflict of interest, typically something of a financial interest, it could include your family members, that that has to be disclosed to the planning commission chairperson or the acting chairperson. And then according to your bylaws, the chairperson determines whether a conflict of interest exists or not. And I thought that that was a decision of the planning commission itself. The full commission would vote, but the bylaws say it's just the chairperson that makes that determination.
Yeah, I think you could, I think there's, well, yeah, I'm sure that's what the bylaws state.
Yeah.
We had talked about it at a council level that if there is a question and the mayor's not comfortable making that determination, it can be put to the entire body.
Yeah.
So that may be something to include in the latest.
Yeah, it does, it asks, it says that they would ask for legal counsel's advice for that. So just something to be aware of. But we've had it happen from time to time, but not terribly often. While you're having a planning commission meeting, focus on the big picture. You don't have a lot of controversial meetings, but sometimes if you do, there may be personalities that can be distracting or issues that don't relate to anything that's on your agenda. And so just to kind of focus on those things and not get overly dwelling, be dwelling on those other issues. Understand and enforce the meeting procedures to keep the meetings on track. That is probably one of the best things that you can do in a contentious meeting is to stick to your procedures and your policies. And it's the role of the chairperson to really stick to that, make that clear in a very objective way and for the rest of the planning commission to support the chair in that and follow along. When we're having our meetings, we always want to make sure that we're following the law, keeping our legal requirements in mind. Particularly you will have that with development review. So does the project meet all applicable zoning requirements? And is the planning commission's decision supported by findings of fact? So those would be your two main questions that you're asking yourselves when you are going through that process.
The fact as opposed to opinion.
Right, right. Role of the chairperson, don't be afraid to use the gavel. You have a gavel up there, do you not? Excellent, all right. So the planning, the chairperson is charged with maintaining order throughout the meeting, enforcing the procedures, ensuring that courtesy is maintained and speakers are not interrupted and that public input is heard. And then direct which comments and questions should be addressed by the appropriate party. So it's usually staff, sometimes it's the applicant as well. When you have a lot of questions or public comment, usually your staff will help support you by taking notes. And then we usually will respond to everything at the end. Unless there's something that just keeps coming up and then you, the chairperson can say, can we just stop for a second? And let's just answer that one question. That keeps the flow directly to the chair and keeps from having extraneous dialogue or debate even between applicant and concerned members of public and staff and planning commission can get kind of wild and woolly. So we want to make sure that that is maintained. So for the planning commissioners tips, stay informed, read your agenda packet before the meetings. It's also a good idea to review portions of the master plan and or the zoning ordinance that are relevant to each agenda item. Maintain open communication, be objective, listen, ask questions. There are no stupid questions and you should always feel free to ask those, preferably before the meetings. If there's anything that we can answer, staff can answer or the applicant can answer for you before. That just helps the flow of the meeting go so much faster. Keep an efficient pace. The chair should recognize when comments should be closed to allow for deliberation. Demonstrate effective leadership by keeping the discussions on track. So sometimes you may have members of the community that come out and they are all over the place or they're focused on something that's really not relevant. Planning commission needs to try to keep things just to the task at hand. Again, if you have questions before a meeting, if you send it to Suzie or staff in advance of the meeting, hopefully we'll have a little bit of time to answer that for you before the meeting starts so that, or at least have the answer for you at the meeting, rather than having to put people off and say, well, we don't know, we'll have to look that up. Which sometimes.
And just on that point, and kind of going with the Open Meetings Act, make, those questions shouldn't be, it shouldn't be an email to the entire body. It should be a direct email to Suzie or the consultant with your question. And then they can bring them up in front of the whole body. But that's kind of that slippery slope of, you know, reply all, so.
Yes, I have, I have a slide on that, but I always support repeating that as many times as it comes up. For public hearings, it's helpful for the chair to describe the ground rules first, that speakers have to address the chair, that comments are brief and to the point. I think we have a three minute time limit here. Speakers, and really that is plenty because I've been at meetings where there's a five minute limit and by, after the third minute, you've heard everything, honestly.
Three people speak and it's 15 minutes later.
Yeah. It's helpful for the planning commission chairperson to establish at the outset that speakers must be courteous and respectful. I think it's just helpful to have that reminder. That the speaker should only address the planning commission one at a time. Sometimes if somebody forgets something and they want to speak again, the chairperson would, can allow that if you so choose. And you might just ask that everybody has a chance to speak one time before you let someone speak again.
But I think, does the Open Meetings Act say that if you let one person speak a second time, then everybody's got to have that same opportunity, right? Because, because I know we ran, we've run into that.
Well, you got to give everybody an opportunity. I mean, you can't tell them they can't make a, you know, can't address the public body at a public meeting. So that's where Jill's point, let everybody else go first. Yeah, you can get up and talk a second time, but everyone's got to have at least their opportunity once.
Right.
And said, yeah, once you, I don't have any issue with ever letting people talk.
Right.
Right, you can ask, you know, if there's new comments or new information that people would like to share, something that's not, something that we've already heard previously, then, you know, just to try to.
Move it along.
Yes. Avoid debating with speakers. There are times when that is very difficult, but you just have to take a deep breath and let, let that just happen out here and not back where you are. Holding questions and answers to the end to keep the meeting on track. I don't know if you've done it lately. I know when we had the cannabis ordinances, when we were all on Zoom, I remember going through the whole list of all the questions and then, and then saying, okay, well, a couple of those weren't really questions. So we're just going to move on from those. And here are the things that were questions and we can answer, ask, ask and answer those. After everybody has spoken, then you can close the public hearing. And then at that point, all the questions and discussion is happening with the planning commission. The audience may want to participate in your conversation, but that's the role of the chair is to say the time, for the public comment is closed. This is the time for the planning commission to ask questions, have conversations and make your determinations. Once a motion is made and seconded, all the points should refer to that motion. And then when the discussion ends, it's helpful to repeat the motion and ask for a vote. Sometimes we can have a lot of discussion and forget what the motion was exactly. So it's always good to repeat that. And once the vote's taken and the matter is concluded, the next agenda item should be presented. So we don't have to linger unless you feel like you need a break if there's been some long discussion and we need to take our rest break. But I think we do, maybe we don't have the public participation rules on the back of the agenda. I think we may have at one point, but that sometimes can be helpful too, just to have the list, like be courteous, all those things that we just kind of outlined. Every question does not have to be answered and that's sort of up to discretion of the chair and to whether a question is actually a question or if it's really just rhetorical. If things get out of hand, you can take a recess. You don't have to feel compelled to make a decision the night of a hearing if you feel like a postponement would lead to a more informed decision. We don't postpone just to avoid making the decision. Really, we want, it's sometimes it's best to just rip off the mandate and go ahead and make it. But sometimes there are, there's information that you feel like you just don't have. And having that additional information would help you make a more confident decision. And so you can do that. Remember that the planning commission represents the interests of the entire community, not just those at the hearing. And this is something that we do, we see everywhere. We get a handful of very, very vocal and very upset folks in a community where there are a lot more people who haven't said anything. And that can be hard to have that kind of conversation and make decisions in the face of that. But that's part of what your job is to discern that. And you are connected to the community and you also have opinions because you live here too. Again, once the hearings close, the public should not be involved in the discussion unless the chairperson invites them into that. When we make motions, the motion should include the description of the request, the action taken, so approval, approval with conditions, denial or postponement, any conditions attached to the approval. The reason for action taken, it's particularly important if we're denying. The reason for action taken, it's particularly important if we're denying something. We want to make sure we're on the record with the reasons for that. Referencing staff reports, consultants' reports when that's appropriate. Again, being sure everyone's clear on the motion before a vote and only one motion at a time.
I'll just, I'll jump on that real quick.
Yeah.
The importance of making a record is, is critical. Because all of the discussion that takes place leading up to that decision and what's in that, contained in that motion, it's, if it's not in the minutes, it didn't happen. So if it, if it's a situation where the city is then forced to defend a decision or a position when challenged, having that additional information is to the rationale. And that's why oftentimes we reference the consultant letters from, from Eric or Jill or whomever, or a memo from staff as part of our motion so that then that becomes part of the official record and can be relied upon. So that's, like Jill said, especially when denying things. But it's a good practice to get into is just to make sure. Oftentimes when you start making a motion, like you said, it, it changes a couple of times and it gets very, but critical to try to remember to incorporate that, that background and what the rationale for the decision was. So just so that it's reflected.
It can help you with future decisions too. If someone says, well, didn't you approve something else down the street? And then you can go back and you can say, yeah, you know what? That was exactly the same situation. Or you can look at it and go, that was completely different. These were the conditions that were associated with that. And these, this is why that was approved or whatever that might be. So they can be really helpful for understanding past decisions too. When you have conditions, those are appropriate. They have to be reasonable though. They have to be designed to protect natural resources, health, safety, welfare, social and economic wellbeing of users, residents, landowners and the community, which is a very big category. But that helps us make sure that they're valid, a valid exercise of the police power. They really, if you think about them being necessary to meet the intent and purpose of the ordinance, things that help us make sure that something, a use does fit in with the ordinance requirements. Related to the standards in the ordinance for the proposed use and be necessary to ensure compliance. And then identifying who's responsible to ensure the conditions are implemented. And that can be one of the, the things that sometimes can get lost in the shuffle is, you know, maybe you want to make sure that, we can go back to the, our laundromat, that the electric metering is updated. I mean, that's probably something that would be covered in the building permit or the electrical permit anyway. But you've decided that you know that building and it's old and you want to make sure that that's updated. And you just can say that as a condition. Make sure the electrical service is upgraded based on a determination from the building official. So that would be, that could be a condition that you would have in there and you've identified who it would be that would be reviewing that.
Question.
Yes.
When we meet and have a public comment section, we always say, please state your name.
Yes.
But you're not required to give your name.
Correct.
But we don't give, we don't let people know that they're not required to do that. Is there?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I just read it when you were saying it, I kept going, we always say, please state your name and where you're from.
We usually say, state your name and your address.
Right.
We stopped, because it used to be able to require, you could ask for both. And then it was, you don't, you don't ask for their address. And I think it's just we've continued to ask, to identify themselves.
Yeah.
But you don't.
And that's for, for the clerk's standpoint so that when taking the minutes she can.
Identify.
Right.
But they don't, if they, if they say.
If they say they don't want to.
Bart Simpson. Good evening, Bart.
Right, and there, I've definitely been at meetings where someone has said, I don't need to give you that information. And then everybody's like, okay.
I was just checking, I thought you had to.
No.
I thought people were required to.
No.
But because the way we say it, it gives you the impression that you're required to.
I think it's.
When I read the proposed language of what you're supposed to say.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that. You're supposed to say, you have the ability to say pass if you don't want to.
Right, that's true.
I didn't know, I just didn't know that until now.
I think if, generally speaking, when people are coming to a meeting to voice their comment, they want their comments to be included on the record and that they made them. And that's the benefit of giving the name. And you don't have to give your address. But it also can be helpful if you're trying to convince the planning commission that, that you have a strong opinion on something and you give your address and you live on the other side of town. That's different than, I live right next door at this address. That, but you're right, people don't have to do it.
They don't have to do it.
Yeah, and we, you wouldn't want to argue with someone. You may ask them questions like, oh, well, where do you, do you live nearby? You could ask that question, but.
I just didn't know that.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
I thought you were required.
It's a good thing to be aware of.
Yeah.
When we have people here and make public comments, it's probably a good idea to.
Right.
Make a statement like, if you would like, you may share your name before making your comment. And if you don't want to, then that's fine too.
No, I just, I just.
I know the language is in there, right?
I just didn't know. I was surprised, I thought it was a requirement.
Yeah. Email communication. So all the emails that you, that you use in your planning commission business are subject to Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act requests. There's really, there is no instance when commission members should exchange emails deliberating on commission items in a quorum. If you get an email and it has some information in it and you've got a question about it and you're tempted to hit reply all, do not do it. You can reply just to the, to the person that sent the email. Double check to make sure before you hit send that you haven't copied everybody. Because you will get a response at least from the city attorney, if not from your planning consultants as well, saying, please don't reply all anymore to this conversation. And sometimes it happens, people do it all the time, as you know, in your business world or, or personal life that people sometimes just hit reply all because it's, I don't know if it's easier, but just avoid it because it can be problematic. Sometimes there could be just, it's not like you're doing anything, you know, deceitful or underhanded or, or to be difficult, but it could be a simple question. Like maybe you're asking, I, I didn't see the address for this property on the agenda. And then the next thing you know, you're four emails in and you're talking about, well, I saw this out there. And like, we've, we've seen that, so it's just a good.
It's been a while, but yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it has been a while. Communication with staff, so.
Back up for a second.
Yes.
You skipped the last.
What did I say? Oh, the email account that you use.
Because we, we ran into this, I ran into this in something else. Because most of us are using our personal email. Because they are subject to the Freedom of Information Act any requests. Is there a rationale behind why we don't provide email addresses from the city for the commissioners?
I was under, I was under the impression that we had corrected that and that everybody was given it.
None of us have city provided email addresses.
Yeah, then that needs that, Bruce has one. We should, that should change that because it absolutely should. That's just a separation. I mean, one, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult process for, you know, us to get access to your Gmail account or something if, if we do need to search and respond to a FOIA request. And two, you know, what might happen is you have to turn your password to that account over and then that subjects everything else in that.
Everything in your email.
To, you know, outside inspection. And if it happens to hit on the words in this, of the FOIA request, then that's being produced as part of it. So that should absolutely not, I thought we fixed that a long time ago.
Do you have her counsel?
What's that?
Counsel has its own.
Yeah, Kelly, we switched that several years ago. Once we switched IT right is when we did it. I thought they made it for everybody.
I thought everybody did, but okay.
This sounds like. I'll make a note to talk to, talk to Kelly and.
That's a very good question.
The staff about it.
Well, once you've had somebody request your personal email, you realize that you don't want to go through that.
No, right.
You're better off having an additional email account.
I, I.
In fact, I think that's what initially what I told, before we had the capacity to do that.
Yeah, like Hotmail.
I believe we said, create your own like Gmail or Hotmail account or something. And only use it for planning commission and then that's.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't, I missed that memo.
Okay, yeah.
No, there's no reason why all of the boards and commissions shouldn't have their city email.
Agreed. Yeah, most communities do.
So that's probably a good thing to add to whatever process.
Yes, I wrote it down, I saw Kelly write it down, I saw Bruce write it down. Someone will get on that.
And board members.
Excellent. Communication with staff, this is, can be more, I'd say, critical in some communities and others, especially in smaller communities where you've got fewer staff and more demands on their time, which you do here. So it's helpful if you've got questions to really go through the chair, if you've got questions of staff. And that way it's all coming from one consolidated place. It's easier to keep track of. And there's a little bit of a filter there too for what is an appropriate question and what's just like, can you figure that out? Or that's really not relevant to this case? Or yeah, that's a good, a good point, let's find out the answers to that.
Or if you've gotten seven of the same requests.
Right.
That way it's not seven emails from staff.
Exactly, exactly. If you disagree with the staff recommendations, state specific reasons for your, your decision. That helps staff draft findings in support of the decision of the planning commission. Simply saying, I just don't like this project is not enough. It kind of goes back to our findings of fact and being clear on the record. Clearly communicate to staff what the commission needs in order to make well-informed decisions. So if you feel like, I don't have this information in the packet, this is hopefully before the meeting. Where is this, this and this? Or I'm just, I'm missing that, did we get that or whatever? Be respectful of staff. It's, I don't need to tell this group that because you all do that. But I would say to compliment staff when and where appropriate. Because I just, and in most cases, like this is, this is one of those general slides that I provide. In most cases, our, our staff that we work with here and elsewhere are really doing the best that they can. So it's always, I like to highlight that. Dealing with neighbors, so you may be at the Jagged Fork having a nice brunch and someone comes up to you and gives you an earful about something. That's natural for people to want to do that. The best way to avoid that kind of discussion is just say, you know what? I really can't discuss this outside of a planning commission meeting, but you're welcome to come. We have a meeting on the third Tuesday at seven o'clock, open to the public, come on out. And, and really encourage that. Let them know who they can write to if they've got specific feedback, but really push that off. It helps you not to even have to engage in that conversation about it. Just come on out to the public meeting. Glad to talk to you about it there.
Isn't it natural that our neighbors are going to want to talk to us about?
Yeah, absolutely. They know that you're on the planning commission.
And aren't they going to feel like, well, you're representing me, so I should be able to talk to you about?
And everyone on the planning commission should have the benefit of hearing your feedback.
We've also heard like some people, like this timeframe when we have our meetings, just does not work for them.
Yeah, please send.
And of course, they can write thing, put things in writing and they can send them off.
Please send an email, absolutely.
It's not, it's not going to happen all the time. Hopefully it will happen most of the time.
Right.
And similarly, I mean, you taught us at one of the sessions that, you know, if, as a commissioner, if you're out looking at a site, like this happened to me with the, the guy who had the accessory structure that was already built. You know, if somebody comes up to you and wants to discuss it with you, don't discuss it with them.
No, you, you can, it's best just to not.
Right.
Get into a discussion. If you have specific questions, like how long has that been up or, I don't know, whatever.
Like I said, I'm a planning commissioner and we're meeting on this and I'm here to look.
Right.
And that was then.
And, and I think really kind of impressing upon them that, you know, if, if you can come and share that in any way, if you come in person or if you send a note, that way everybody can hear what your concerns are and that just becomes part of the public record on this. You know, I might not represent you 100% other than just to say, you know, my neighbor doesn't like this. Well, why not? What is their, what is their concern? Well, they just thought there would be too much traffic. Well, but what about this, this and this? Well, they are not there to answer those questions and so they may not be giving exactly what their, their thoughts really are. So to the extent that you can push people off to come, because you don't probably want to get into those kind of discussions either on your personal time. And that's completely reasonable to say, please just come to the meeting. I mean, we have lots of room.
Is it not allowed to have a conversation?
So there's nothing really that precludes you from having that conversation? And, and I would say this is probably more, what we're talking about right now is more specific to like a, the specific development project or something that's going to be coming.
Maybe a sidewalk replacement project.
Yes. Now, if your neighbor comes up and says, you know what? I, I really think you guys should have your meetings outside because it's really nice in the summer. And you could, you know, obviously bring that and be like, I had a resident say we should have our meetings outside. But when there's specifics, it's always better, like we talked earlier, it's always better to make a record and have them come up and address the public. It becomes part of the minutes. And then, you know, if they're that passionate about it to track you down at Jagged Fork, interrupt your omelet, then might as well make it part of the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Nothing that, you know, you can't, it's not saying you can't have that conversation, but.
Right, there may be times where you say, you know what? We're having a meeting coming up to talk about laundromats. And they might say, well, what is that all about? Well, you know, we've got this business, they're interested in moving in and we're going to have a couple of public meetings on it. So be helpful if you came out and these are some of the things that we're thinking about.
I'm just thinking there are times it might be that a three minute exchange one way doesn't allow a conversation to occur to help you fully understand how a resident feels about something.
But if you have those questions, then other people on the planning commission, they have them as well.
I'm just saying, if I have a discussion with someone, I mean, ultimately I would say you should come and do this. But I may want to hear the full blast of, here are the 17 reasons why I think laundromats are bad, which in a three minute discussion or three minute reading of the rant won't happen.
Right, but if there's an expectation then from that person that the other 14 items on their list are going to be presented by you, that's problematic.
No, I understand that, I understand that. I wouldn't look to get it to present it. It would be so that I could have a better feeling for what a resident might feel.
Right, but then you're getting the benefit.
You're getting the full story whereas the remainder of your commissioner are not. And you can't, you can't now have a discussion with this body about that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it can be, yeah, I mean, I get, we don't want to cut off conversation and dialogue, especially with our neighbors who are clearly not always coming to our meetings. So it is nice when you could get someone who's interested in something and like, tell me more, what do you think? But really trying to get that focused here for everybody to have the benefit of it.
I shouldn't say that, I'll take that back. I said, you can't have a discussion, but you can still have a discussion, but it has to be here at this meeting. And so you're not, and if they're not here, you're not going to have that benefit.
But that you might.
I said, I said that and then I thought, wait a minute, no, that's not.
How, how would that functionally work? Because like the, the, the way the meeting format runs, we have a public comment. Somebody makes a three minute public comment and then we may or may not respond to it. And if we are going to respond to it, the suggestion is to wait until the end of the meeting to respond to it. That's not a dialogue, that's not a back and forth. It's intended not to be on purpose.
Right, and, and you know, and really, I mean, that's part of your responsibility up here, right? So you hear the public comments during, during the public hearing. And then, okay, now it's your turn to have the discussions amongst yourselves. You can ask questions back to the applicant. If there's something that you heard from a resident during the public hearing, that's where you, you take your notes and you bring that point up. And maybe this body has a discussion on that point. You know, so, and, and also you have the opportunity too. If, if, you know, you guys start talking about it and Jill raises her hand and says, I know it's really past the public comment, but that's not what I meant. I, you know, I was talking like this. You can say, all right, well, then can you clarify? Okay, maybe, you know, so.
Yeah, or there's times the council will ask somebody who had a recent, who had an earlier public comment, what they meant or where was this or, you know, whatever.
Again, you don't want to, you want to utilize that as infrequently as needed because you don't want to set a pattern that everyone thinks that they can just come in and, well, wait a minute, and I change my, I want to, I've thought of this after the fact and, and opening it. Because you'll never get out of here then, you'll never have a productive discussion.
Scott, I think we had that when the discount hired and there's a long line of cars. We had some residents that came in and they were giving their opinion. And I think we asked a question, I think Mark actually responded back to one of the couples for clarification.
Yeah, I think it was, there was one of the gentleman and his wife that lived right behind it or something. We wanted, yeah, so yeah, that happened. Again, it happens time to time and it's beneficial, but you just don't want to make that your pattern so that everyone feels they have as many bites at the apple as they want.
Well, at least until 10:00 PM.
Yeah.
So moving on to some of the responsibilities of the planning commission, prepare and adopt a master plan. We touched on that a little bit. The authority to prepare and adopt the master plan is vested with the planning commission. That's part of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. There is a public hearing that's required for that. City council doesn't need to approve it, they can. But the planning commission is the one that takes the final action on it. There is also, according to the Planning Enabling Act, the opportunity for neighboring communities, or community in this case, and the county to provide some feedback before your public hearing. So we go through that whole process. I mean, the city's been pretty consistent with it every, about every five years doing that process. The zoning ordinance is also something that's, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I had some questions about the master plan. And I was, you know, without saying names, basically we create a plan, but we don't know how it's being funded and with the county. And with the county, they have different opportunities that avail themselves that do we, can we actually start to connect some CBDDG or different opportunities that may avail themselves for the city when we're looking at a master plan? Or is it like, basically, here's our needs and that's what we hope to get done in five years somehow? Because I, I, I'm just thinking about some, like, when some opportunities avail themselves, it seems like we don't really get in any of that. And it, it does synchronize with the master plan if there are opportunities that could be available that we could actually start to connect those pieces. Obviously, I'm assuming that's overstepping our bounds in terms of whether it happens or whatnot. But I, I just, I don't see a connection between master plan and the reality of dollars and opportunities that have been happening over the past few years.
Doesn't the master plan help set priority for the city administrator and the staff? And therefore, they should, they're running the day-to-day. They should be like making decisions based on the guidance that they're getting from the master plan. Is this something that the Planning Commission has determined is important for the community or not? Right? And then using that as one piece of information along with a lot of other things, like what was the budget that was approved by the city council and things like that to make a decision. And sometimes, like, we do stuff that's opportunistic, right? We bought a van for the city that wasn't necessarily like a high priority, but an opportunity came up for a grant, right? So you sometimes take advantage of those things. So that's how I look at it. It's like, our, our job is to try to articulate for the city administrator and for the city council what we as a body, as a commission, believe is, should be the priority for different categories and which among those categories maybe should be the most important. And then they can take that as input to deciding things like the budget and the actual expenditures. But it's not really our job to like dictate.
No, no, no.
But I think if you have ideas on implementation and funding sources for that, that those are definitely welcome. They may not need to go into the plan itself, like, we're going to do this and to the extent you know, like, hey, we're going to create another TIF district. Right? So we would maybe say that as an implementation item, like explore the creation of another TIF district to effectuate this. But if there's other specific tools that you know of and you say, hey, we've got this in our master plan, I know there's a fund that we can use that nobody was aware of before.
Right.
That's definitely part of implementation.
Yeah, I'm thinking like three years, you're in the middle of the master plan. It's already been done. It's two years passes and it's like, oh, wow, but this actually happened at the county level or state level that, and they're looking because this one's not, it's not being spent down.
Right. Or there may be things as you're going through the master plan process or even no. And say, you know, we had said in our last plan that we were going to do these three things, but we never thought about this fourth thing. And this could also help reach these goals that we've articulated. We haven't said it in here, but if we did say it in here, then that makes us eligible for this kind of funding. That might be something that we would do. We do that probably more specifically with recreation plans because those have to be done every five years. And they, if we're going to apply for a grant, for example, it has to be tied to that plan. So there may be things that we anticipate that, you know, gosh, this came up. We got to amend our recreation plan so we can have it in here. If it's something specific, I, we can try to work with stuff to say, like, this fits right in with this category here. It doesn't specifically say it, but generally, we're good covered here. So hopefully, that's the case. But if there are things that you know about, then I would say definitely share that with staff.
I'll probably recuse myself, but yes, I'll.
Yeah, yeah, it may be too.
And it's also something that the DDA coordinator can help with, right? Can see the information through.
Absolutely.
You made a reference to TIF district. What's that?
Tax increment financing. So that is how our, our Downtown Development Authority, our DDA district operates, collecting tax increment financing dollars. So the, a TIF would be, when we created our DDA, we had the base level of our property tax revenues. And the city still always gets that base level of revenue. But the DDA is allowed to, in theory, every year that tax revenue or the assessed value gets higher. And the idea is that it's getting higher because of activities that the DDA is doing in the district. This gap, that extra incremental revenue can go to the DDA than to be funded back into the district. And then in theory, you're still collecting. And there's a specific timeline associated with that. And then again, that base level of funding still goes back into the general fund.
Brilliant.
Yeah, until we have two TIF districts.
Got it, okay.
So there could be brownfields that you, that operate with TIF financing, DDA's corridor improvement authorities.
One city had an airport.
I was going to say airport authorities. Yeah, they all operate.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to airport. Yeah, let's, let's get a helipad. No, I know there's a lot of benefit that comes back to the city through the DDA. I did not realize that was through something called a TIF district.
Yes.
And I'm guessing other people may be watching this on YouTube. Maybe didn't know either.
Good. All right. Moving on to the zoning ordinance. So where our master plan is our vision for the future, the zoning ordinance is one of our biggest implementation tools because it gives us the rules for development of private property that we want to make sure aligns with our vision. So the Planning Commission will draft that ordinance text and the zoning map. It has to be based on your master plan. They have to be in alignment. You have to hold public hearings before you make any kind of amendments or adopt it to begin with. And then adoption is done by city council. And we follow that same process anytime we amend the text or the map. So we have master plan, geez, 16 things to push to get, oop, too many. All right, so our master plan, long range envision. It's a guiding document. It helps us with policy decisions and land use decisions. Our zoning ordinance is immediate, it's regulatory, and it's enforced. But those are kind of the distinctions. Master plan comes first. Zoning ordinance supports that master plan. So in our adoption process, Planning Commission is the one that begins that process by discussing and reviewing, holding a public hearing and making a recommendation to city council. City council will also discuss and review. They may hold a public hearing. They might send it back to the Planning Commission if they want additional study or changes made. They will often approve it because in a good functioning municipal government, our Planning Commission is the trusted body that, that does the study that's, that's authorized to do this work. And you're selected for that reason. So in most cases, city council will adopt the changes that you suggest, yes?
I don't know if it's just my eyes and I can't see, but public hearing, does that say optional in parentheses?
In the green one, it does. And I'm sorry, it's really, like, I can see it pretty well here, but your screens are brighter.
I'm like, what is this?
Yeah, it says optional.
So the city council may choose to do a public hearing, an additional public hearing.
They don't often.
They don't generally do it.
If ever.
I can't think of a time we've ever had a public hearing for a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, because usually-
We've already done one.
Right.
Hot, before we go into development reviews, how do we integrate, like, let's say, state housing plan stuff that they have down to county level plan? Because they're on a five-year for all kinds of different stuff. And, and, and get that looking at, maybe it works for our village and maybe it doesn't, but at least a consideration because there's sometimes some recommendations or kind of where the county's going and where the state's going that may actually really make a lot of sense from a zoning perspective or bubbling up even to a master plan.
Yeah.
Is there precedent for that? Or precedent for that in other cities that?
Absolutely. I think that would be definitely something that would, would be considered in your master plan process, right? That's still policy setting. If you have, and, and we talk about housing in the comprehensive plan. And we talked about some specific ways in which we want to encourage more housing. Then we start looking then after that at zoning ordinance to say, okay, we said in our master plan that we supported more housing in the city. How are we allowing that? How are we enabling that through our zoning ordinance?
See, I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, but that would, yeah.
It's kind of hot to trot right now.
Right. So, but if there's other things like that, I'm trying to think of what else.
The environmental one is supposed to come out.
The which?
The, the, they have an environmental plan that's kind of like a housing plan where they're also doing best practices.
It's, I think, a hazard mitigation plan coming out. That might be something because we said actually in the master plan, specific to the hazard mitigation plan, that we're going to be consistent. So if there are things that come through that and we need to make some zoning changes, we can do that because the, we said already that we were going to do those kinds of things. So trying to anticipate to the extent that we can, other regional planning documents, things that might come down from the state. And then just trying to be aware of things that are coming. So we are aware of, it's not quite to the pending legislation level yet, but new standards relating to solar energy probably aren't going to really be applicable here, but we'll certainly bring that to you.
It is. The IRA just passed where nonprofits can now get the 30% from the Fed standpoint.
That's good to know. And it's a little bit different than what I was thinking of, just like the large-scale utility solar.
The big plan.
We're probably not going to have to worry about that. But if there are, if there are other things that we should be doing to help nonprofits or businesses or residents benefit from those kinds of changes and we need to make some changes in the zoning ordinance to allow for that, those are things that we should try to stay on top of for sure.
Fair enough.
And we definitely support that in the comprehensive plan too.
Okay, I've asked a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, those are great questions.
It's all good.
Yeah. We don't have to get too much into the development reviews. We do C-site plan reviews from time to time, special land uses from time to time. We don't get a lot of rezonings and we've had one, plan unit development. But that's something-
Oh, no, I'm talking about rezoning review, one big rezoning review.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That was, yeah.
And yes, also one.
Oh, yeah. When we're using those types of reviews, the rezoning and the plan unit development, we may rely more on our comprehensive plan or our master plan for guidance because those will have some discretionary standards attached to them as well that we want to be looking at. Our site plan review process generally starts with a pre-application conference. And whether it's just Suzie or Suzie and Eric or Suzie and Eric and I, Suzie, Eric, I, and Scott, we may have, depending on the level of complexity of a project, all of us may be looking to, to make some determinations. You know, what's been interesting lately, I would say over the last year or maybe two, are the different kinds of projects that we talk about to see, well, how does that fit? Where would that go? What do they need to do? What's the process for that? And that's kind of interesting. So I think there's, that's good to see that kind of creativity and change happening. Things like the laundromat, you know, how do we account and accommodate new businesses in the city? Then they come to you for, for discussion, review of their site plans and you will either approve, approve with conditions or deny, or again, postponing to allow for additional information. So they may tell you that they have an idea for this new kind of machine that is, I don't know, whatever. You'd say, can you give us a little more information on that? Oh, I can think of an example. One of the examples was the Happy's Pizza Plaza where they had some different kind of material. And we weren't sure that it was consistent with the ordinance, so we asked them, we postponed that and, and asked them to provide some more information. And they gave a whole boatload of information on that material.
They provided examples of the material.
Yeah, and some examples of where it had been used in other places. It was really helpful and I think made the Planning Commission feel a lot more comfortable.
Whatever happened with the Subcommittee on Materials? Did that go anywhere?
Yeah, so Mark Pachowski and Les and I had met two times, I think.
We met twice.
To discuss that and had some ideas and it kind of just stalled and, you know. We didn't, we didn't identify anything burning that we felt like needed adjustment to the existing building materials and stated in the building ordinance. So that's kind of where it got. But it was, it was good to kind of establish that if like some new building material comes up that somebody who is an applicant wants to use and we can consider whether we should, that we now have a committee in place to help facilitate that so that we don't have to spend a lot of time in Planning Commission meetings actually doing that work. We do, eventually would need to.
Right.
But we could just kind of short-circuit it by doing some of the work outside in the Subcommittee.
Right. And you can do that for any other kind of ordinance changes that you might want to consider as well. Our special land use process also includes a site plan, but it adds on a public hearing. And that's just part of special land uses. Special land uses are uses that generally are probably okay in the district that they're listed in, but maybe not at every single location that might be having that zoning category. So we have a public hearing. We may have some special standards that we attach to those uses just to make sure that they're compatible with whatever might be next door or nearby or other kinds of traffic concerns or whatever. You do also have the site plan for that and then that goes to council for final approval. Rezoning also similar in that there's discussion and review and a public hearing. Again, recommendation to council, same process for. This one's kind of, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. I'm just going to, yeah, I'm just going to skip right over it. I'll leave it up for a second. But, planning unit development tool is something that, that the city is allowed to use to approve a project that might not fit under our traditional zoning standards. Why would we let someone develop something that doesn't match our zoning standards? And they might be providing additional community benefits or helping us achieve some other goal that we have, that we've articulated in our master plan that they just can't do within the current framework. So the planning unit development allows for some flexibility in exchange for that, those additional community benefits.
Do we have a current, do we have current PUDs in Lathrow?
We do.
Yeah.
Should recall.
That's the only one.
Yep. So that's that.
There it is.
That's all there is to say. Again, we talked about postponing action. I don't know that we need to get too much more into that. We do need to have a motion to postpone that though. If you're going to, if you're going to bring something back later in the same meeting, you could table something. That's the appropriate wording for that. Otherwise, it's a postponement. Any questions on that?
We like tabling.
You what?
We like to use the word tabling. We have a table, the agenda item section. It just sits on the table forever.
Any questions on that? It was good to kind of go through those as we.
All good?
Yeah. Now, it's 8:30, so we can pause it there and talk about anything else. I can go through some of the other portion of the historic Lathrow Village things or we can do that another time. So I'm completely up to whatever you all want to do. I won't be offended if you tell me to-
My personal feeling, I want to, would like to talk about the historic district stuff and learn more about it, but I want to spend appropriate focus on it. So I'd rather see that happen in the next meeting or whenever you're available.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And is it the historic district or the history of the Planning Commission?
It's more, it's more about the history of how the city was developed. And then, that's a little bit of the beginning and then a kind of a, just a touching over of planning efforts since 2009, since that 2009 master plan that we didn't do, but that was done, that kind of set the stage for the Village Center area. And then the things that have been done since. There's some video clips in there of a former, former mayor, former county, uh, planning commissioners that every time I see it, I just get a smile on my face because they're just lovely people, just like you are.
That looks like a different smile.
Different smile.
Sounds like a different smile. So we're going to postpone the second part of this until we have more appropriate timing.
That's my suggestion.
That's fine with me.
Get the appropriate wording. Table it.
Table it. We'll just, we'll add another agenda item to the future.
Yeah. Now, having said all that, if there's anything else that you want to, and we don't have to obviously do it tonight, but if there are other things that come up, other topics, like you want to talk more about housing? We could talk about housing, you know, have a kind of housing, like what about accessory dwelling? I don't know if we've talked about that. Have you talked about that?
I mean, we talked a lot about accessory dwellings when we had the site plan review for the resident that wanted to add an additional accessory dwelling.
Okay.
So we talked a lot about the ordinances around that specific topic because it was kind of driven by that request, by that application. But, yeah. I know that we adjusted our ordinances to accommodate larger accessory dwellings because, you know, the manufacturing standards have changed, right?
The accessory structures.
Accessory structures, sorry.
We even ended up wanting to take out the accessory dwellings.
Right, yes.
It was not popular and then now it's popular again, so...
Right.
Yeah, you can't win, right? It's all a fact.
Yeah.
Who would want their in-laws living on their property? Let's get rid of that.
Oh, it's really expensive to buy a house. Let's have our in-laws move back in.
Now, my kids are living in the backyard.
Yeah, maybe that would be worthwhile. But, so I think if anybody has any specific topics that they would like to delve into in the planning commission, probably the best thing is to feed the request through the DDA director, Suzie. And then she can help coordinate that and we can add it to an agenda.
Cool. Cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
So, moving on, other matters for discussion. Everybody have anything? The only thing that I could think of was normally Suzie would provide us with a status update on all the projects that she's tracking and she's obviously not here to provide that. But you can tell just by looking out the window, there's been a lot of significant progress made on the Panera project. So, I'm very curious to find out when they're actually going to have it built. I imagine it probably won't take them more than a couple of months at this point, but...
Can hope.
We hope.
I just have one real small update. There's a, and I went last year because it was on Mackinac Island, but they have, Meta has their conference in Marquette and they have a lot of cool activities. And that's in August, if I recall.
Is it the Michigan Economic Developers Association?
Yeah. Yeah. And so, that was a really cool, they have a lot of cool sessions. And just being able to talk to different planning commissioners or, you know, just different EDA economic development folks. It was kind of cool just to see what was going on and how people were trying to solve some of the problems that we talk about in our meetings. I found it useful, so just consider it.
Suggesting that maybe people on the planning commission...
I don't know if people would want to go, but it was, you know, for my line of work, it worked, made sense too. But I just thought it was helpful when you put the planning commissioner hat on just with the amount of information and dialogue that you get to have organically. So, it's something to consider if you guys wanted to join or whatever.
When does it normally happen?
Well, it changed because it was later last year. It's in August. If everybody's okay, I will send that to Suzie and then she can distribute.
That'd be great.
And then see if there's any interest.
Was that when I saw you guys up there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, actually, no, let's see, when was that? No, that was different.
Okay.
Yeah. I go up there quite a bit.
You go to Mackinac Island a lot.
In the Michigan Association of Planning Conference, it'll be in Traverse City at the Grand Traverse Resort in October. I don't have a date, but we can make sure you guys get that too.
Great. Yeah, yeah. Keep us posted on that. That'd be great. Thank you. Any other, other matters for discussion? Great. General communications. Suzie's not here. She would normally give us something. You got anything, Scott?
I got nothing.
Anything from the city council? Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn or we'll just go ahead and adjourn.
Any conditions?
Yeah.
We're adjourned?
We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.